Today I'm sitting down with Danielle Weston. She is a wife, a mother and a veteran. She has chosen to be on the front lines of the war for the future of Texas children, which is education. She has endured harassment, threats. She has been the target of lawsuits and that is all due to the fact that she is one of the two sitting conservative members on Round Rock ISD's school board. Now, what she has endured is not just happening here in Round Rock. It's happening all over the state of Texas. She is one of many. You don't want to miss this show. It's impactful. You're going to find out information that you have not read online and you haven't seen on TV. So don't forget to hit the like button, subscribe and ring that bell. About a year ago, I was at an event in Dallas and I was speaking on the similarities and the issues taking place in California and how I was noticing what was happening there and why we left was slowly starting to happen here because the perception of Texas outside of Texas is we have the best education and I do agree with that 100%. We do have great education. We have good school districts, just like we have some really corrupt and ugly and bad school districts in the state of Texas. And I had a mom come up to me, Michelle Evans, and she said, are you aware of what's going on in Round Rock ISD? And I said, no. She said, well, you come to one of our meetings. So I was like, sure. So I, the, one of the meetings had the mothers from Round Rock in Leander. So I went to Leander, drove down here and went to this meeting and one by one, I started seeing teachers, teachers were there, mothers were there, the fathers were speaking out what was going on. It's very difficult for, I'm, I'm not an easy crier. I'm kind of like the pit bull where, okay, we have to, if there's something's going on, we're going to fix it. Whatever we need to do, we gotta, we have to fix it fast. That's kind of how I am. I was listening to the stories of what was going on in Round Rock, within Round Rock ISD and I, I teared up. I was like, is, and I looked at Michelle and I said, is this really going on in Texas? And she goes, you just wait. And that's the moment that I was like, something has to be done. So I went back to Dallas. I started asking my parents. I started asking my cousins, my friends, other parents. I was like, are you aware of what's going on in Round Rock? And I had to say Round Rock because here I am in Frisco, Texas. I'm not hearing any of this is going on up here. I'm not hearing it. I'm seeing, you know, high schools are having issues with principals and no one knew. Parents did not know. My friends did not know. They were just really not aware of what's happening. And since that, and since I've been with Michelle, it's been like a can of worms have been opened. And I have realized one thing, that school boards are one of the most important votes that people can make. What is the, and I, and I wonder sometimes, what is the most important vote a person can cast? What, and I, most people think it's the president, they're going to show up and vote for president. Maybe it's the center. It's not. You guys have a lot of power. You have a lot of power to change the entire direction of a school. You have power and you have dominance. You have tools at your disposal. You really are the front lines of the war for America. Tell me about yourself because you're sitting board member at Round Rock ISD, one of the most talked about, I would say, school boards in the whole state of Texas. You're like the catapult that opened parents' eyes all over the state to make them say, it's happening there, then what don't I know? I have to go check out what's happening in our libraries. I have to go check out my score, school board members. So tell me a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So thank you for having me, Cambry. And I'll just start by saying that, um, you know, I am one of seven school board members in Round Rock ISD. I only speak for myself. I'm only here today in my individual capacity and I do not speak for the board as a body corporate about myself. So my husband and I, we've been married for over 20 years. Between us, we have a total of five children who have always spent all of their education in public education. I'm not from Texas originally. My husband and I actually met on the flight line of Easternwood Airport when we were both on active duty in college stations. That's where we met. So, you know, we both swore an oath to support and defend this country and to offer our lives if necessary to do so. And so a few years ago, I started realizing that something was not right in our local schools and I started going to board meetings and I decided that I was going to run and I ended up winning in 2020 to a four-year term by about eight percentage points. And to your point about how important these elections are, I would say that for most of my life, I thought that the White House was the most important vote that I would cast, right? Who was going to be our president? And in recent years, what I've come to appreciate is that actually there's a vote that is more important than the White House and it's the schoolhouse. And it's the reason why Matt Rinaldi, who's the chairman of the Republican Party of Texas, has recently said that he would give up every congressional seat in the country if he could have every school board seat in the country. So whether you're talking about the, the two things that voters, taxpayers and parents care about more than anything, it's twofold. Their children and their money. And it's our local schools where their children and their money is going.
So you've been in office two years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you still have two more years left. What has, what has surprised you the most?
A year ago, when the board majority started to relentlessly pursue Mary Bone and I for these, this non-stop censure attack and we obtained a temporary restraining order to prevent the board majority from being able to act counter to the operating procedures and counter to the law. I began getting outreach from school board members all over the state of Texas. Uh, it was really interesting because what I'm finding is that what's going on in Round Rock ISD is just symptomatic of a larger problem where we've got people in these school board seats around the state who really have not been vetted. You know, these are down ballot races. These are, you know, voters cannot rely on an R or a D beside their name. And I think most people either believe or they want to believe that anybody running for a school board seat in the state of Texas is a good person, you know, is somebody who really cares about children and who is there for the right reasons. And I think that what people have realized is that in, in a lot of cases, that's not true, but there are good school board members around the state who are pro-student, pro-family, pro-education, uh, pro-bright future for all of our students. And we are starting to connect with each other and we are starting to learn from each other. We're starting to help each other. And I think this is going to be the good for the future.
It's a hard position. I applaud you for that because some people probably wouldn't be able to take it, but you have to fight to win, um, the will to fight. Um, like you said, you're, you're here to defend this country, not that includes our children as well.
What has surprised me the most is just how willing the board majority that is in power today on our school district, just how comfortable they are with offensively low academic standards for children. I have sat through multiple, uh, board goal-setting meetings with my colleagues. They are comfortable, Cambry, with over half of our African-American students not reading on grade level. They are comfortable with 70% of our Hispanic students not being able-
How are the parents not com- compares? There's no way that parents can be comfortable with this, right?
Right. So when I, I'll tell you, when I ran for the seat in 2020, I met a lot of people. Not one person ever said, you know, Danielle, what I'm looking for in a future school board member is somebody who's comfortable with my child not being able to read. I never met anybody like that. And yet our board is comfortable with these offensively low standards, um, for students and it's not what parents want. And I don't even think people, um, understand just how much power the school board has to set these goals. And I have to ask myself, Cambry, who benefits when, um, 75% of economically disadvantaged students can't read on grade level? Who benefits from that? Well, the reason that we, the board sets the goals for the school district is these are the standards by which we hold the superintendent accountable. So my concern is that the board is setting these goals so low so that they are easily achieved and so that the superintendent can remain in power. And I will tell you, Cambry, I am not here for adults. I am here for children, families, parents and taxpayers. And I have been very surprised at the comfort level of low academic standards for children. In these board goal-setting meetings, I would advocate, you know, we need to have at least 10% improvement year over year, 15% because when your data is so low, when your data is in the gutter, I believe what the community is expects is leaders to step forward, say, this is not okay, because the minute you start setting goals that respect the future of children, that respect taxpayer dollars, then all of a sudden the things like a bloated administration and other wasteful spending begins to be scrutinized so that more money is redirected back to the classroom to help our kids, which is what we're supposed to be here for. The data shows us, Cambry, if a child is not reading on grade level by third grade, they will never catch up. What you do from kindergarten to third grade is you learn to read so that from fourth grade and beyond, you can read to learn.
You have endured harassment. You've endured harassment. You've had lawsuits thrown at you, targeting. I have to say that you are absolutely targeted. It's, this is the same thing that's happening all over the state of Texas. It's, it's like a, a copycat. I'm seeing copycat effect, but then again, I look back and go, I believe all of this is orchestrated because they're using the same verbiage. They want to censor, um, the school board members. They want to remove them from their seats. It is, it's like a copycat all over and it's almost like there's a guide on what they need to do to remove you guys from office. But the harassment you have had to endure is, uh, definitely something that shocked me and I thought I would never see in the state of Texas because, um, we are a state that prides ourself in being friendly and like you said earlier, they want to remove everything, like, um, in God we trust. And I'm thinking, God bless Texas because it's just the greatest state in the world. I love, I love this state so much. I really do. I don't want people to think that I'm harping on it. I'm not, I just want to bring the light of what's going on. But with this territory, I have seen hatred. I've seen overreach. I've seen powerful overreach. I've seen corruption and you, have you and Mary?
Yes.
Have taken the brunt of all of this because there is only two of you guys and there are five of the other ones. What have you had to endure harassment-wise? Have you had to take precautions on your life, your family, your children? This affects your kids too.
Well, I'll tell you, Cambry, what's been helpful for me is my military background. Um, you know, I was, uh, on active duty for many years, had multiple assignments and was willing to lay down my life for my country. So although it's unpleasant to endure the harassment, I believe that the one thing worth fighting for and the one thing worth enduring this harassment for is children. Because if children aren't worth it, then what is? Yes, the harassment runs the gamut. Everything from never-ending censure threats, uh, but I will tell you that I think what was, what has been most offensive in the harassment, and yes, there was a removal lawsuit filed by, uh, somebody who doesn't even live in our community. He lives four hours away, uh, but I think he's connected to some of, um, some radical elements of-
Has to be.
-of our community. Um, and by the way, that removal lawsuit against me was dismissed with prejudice just last week. So that, that case is closed. But what has been most offensive to me in the harassment has been when they decided they were going to use tax dollars intended for children. Tax dollars taken from property owners and we told them, we're going to use this money to educate children and they used that money to hire a Dallas-based law firm to investigate me. Now, of course, this investigation was conducted entirely counter to the operating procedures. Uh, they, the school district withheld information from the, this law firm that would have shown that, you know, they, they cited that I shared some confidential information that an attorney said in an email, but then they didn't provide the law firm with the footage from the board meeting where the attorney said the same thing. Uh, they said that I shared another document from an attorney that was attorney-client privilege, but they didn't share the document that my attorney wrote in response to that saying that, uh, asserting in the law that threatening letters from lawyers do not constitute attorney-client privilege. So, you know, when you're using tax dollars in the state of Texas, intended for children to target school board members and to try to criminalize because they disagree with you, we have a problem. And you're right, today we have a majority, five trustees who are engaging in this behavior. But Cambry, I believe that they know that they are vulnerable in November. They, they can't even help but mention it in our recent board meetings. And I'm hearing this from around the state. Uh, we've got many school boards in Texas where incumbents are losing over and over and over. And I think that these incumbents here in Round Rock ISD can see that writing on the wall around the state and they're nervous and the only tool left, Cambry, the only tool left in their toolkit is to attack me. But what they forget is that I'm not on the ballot this November.
So this is election season and yes, school board members across the whole state of Texas, they are nervous. And we did see in the primaries that a lot of seats were flipped. And I do believe that that's just due to the fact that parents are starting to be more aware of what's going on. I'm slowly starting to see news outlets starting to report the behaviors going on. Uh, social media is so powerful because the one thing that you have going for you is there are parents, that video, they record everything. And once they put it out to social media, they make everyone aware. They start seeing going, oh my gosh, this is crazy. And then they start looking into what's going into their backyard. And then they start finding out who's running for office. I had to do the same thing back up north. Um, I had to look and see who were these two, uh, school board members that were running. And I went and sat down and actually had lunch with Stephanie Rad. So I sat down with her and I am the kind of mom that will ask some of the questions that some of the other people won't ask because it's difficult for parents. Um, and I think people in general to understand that you guys are not running as, with a party. And that's confusing to some people because when we look at candidates, now I'm having to look at specific verbiage. When they talk about who am I, um, what I, what I believe in, what I want for the school district, if you're starting to say adversity, equity, equality, I know immediately that you are going right into that left lane category, would go with that CRT woke agenda and that's how you're trying to slide it in. Um, but some, and the same thing with mayors because we don't know what they are. We think, they say all the great things, but we don't know if there's an R or a D. So we have to start digging. That's difficult for parents because these are a lot of people that run for school district, I've noticed, are just concerned citizens. And like you said, some people that are running, I do believe that they are selected to run. And I believe that with all my heart because if they were not selected to run, this would not be happening. I do not believe this would be happening all over the state of Texas. So come November, you have what, 1,200 students? What do voters need to know about the November elections that is coming up for those who are on the ballot? And then what do they need to know about keeping an eye on who, when, uh, the school board members are up? Because we do have special elections and those are really easy to forget about, um, because most people only focus on primaries, midterms and the general.
Mm-hmm. So we have 46,000 students in our school district and-
That's a 1,200.
That's, that's fine. There's a lot, it's 1,200 school districts.
1,200 school districts in the state of Texas.
Yes, ma'am. Um, but it looks like about 100,000 people are going to vote in the Round Rock ISD school board elections in, uh, in about 100 days. And this is what I'll tell you, you can't rely on R and D next to names, um, in the state of Texas when it comes to school board elections. Uh, it's, it's really, um, going to be important for citizens, rank and file voters to do their research and to ask questions to find out who these people are. It's that, that are running for these seats. Questions like, what do you believe the role of a school district is? What do you believe the role of a school board member is? What do you think is the purpose of public education? These fundamental questions. Do you believe that parents should be treated as partners in our schools? Or do you believe that administrators and lawmakers know best? I mean, these are fundamental questions. I'll tell you, last week I was at the Capitol down in Austin, uh, for two full days. We're not even in session right now. We're in the interim. And yet the Texas Capitol, I met so many parents from around the state who traveled in from the Lubbock area, traveled in from East Texas, traveled in from South Texas. Cambry, they're not happy and they flooded the Capitol just for two days, um, on, to listen, to participate in the public education hearings. There are no bills up for consideration, none of this. And I'm asking around, I'm going, this is unusual to have the, the Capitol of our state flooded with concerned parents when the legislature is not even in session. And I think it's a harbinger of what's to come when the legislative session gavels in, in, uh, January. I think parents are coming. I think the legislature knows it. I think the Texas Education Agency knows it. I think the governor knows it. Parents are engaged now more than ever, but to voters, I would say, you need to ask meaningful questions to find out who these people are that want to represent you on your local school board, what their values are, what their agenda is, what their objectives are. But then there's part two, Cambry, and this is where so many voters, I think, fail in their duties. Voting for somebody is step one. Holding them accountable is step two. It's extremely important. You've got to continue to pay attention to what they're doing. You've got to continue to pay attention to the decisions that they're making in those school board meetings. You don't just vote for somebody and then think that your work here is done. The work is never ending.
I know that the parents really want to get more involved. Um, in some, some districts, I believe the parents will be able to walk up to school board members, have a conversation. There's going to be some school districts that are going to be difficult to reach a school board members. They don't want to talk because they have one plan in mind and that's their plan and they have their agenda that they want to push through. I believe that the parent's voice matters now more than the history and the history of the state of Texas, of the concerns that we have, uh, matter now more. What would you advise the parents to do when it comes to, what would you tell them? If you say, you know, your voice does matter because I believe at the end of the day, when you get enough parents in a room or you get enough parents together that say, you know what, I'm going to put my foot down. Enough is enough. I'm going to walk into that school board meeting. They can haul me out in handcuffs. They can, uh, they can arrest me in my home weeks later, like what's happened in Round Rock. Would you tell the parents why their voice matters? I know when, there's more of us than there is of them. I'm not of y'all. I can't even say that. There is more of us, but, uh, our voices can nudge people in the directions that we want them to go. Is, why do they need to keep speaking up? Do they need to be relentless? Do they just need to sit back and wait? Do they need to compromise with the school board members? I'm asking these questions because these are questions that is proposed to me. What do I do? Does my voice even matter if all they're going to do is just lock me up, put me in handcuffs? And then I wake up the next day concerned for my child going to school because there could be a retaliation with the children, with my daughter or my son at school because I, I got, I offended the school board member.
So I'll tell you this, one of the reasons why as a young woman, I chose to put on a uniform and raise my hand to support and defend the constitution is because I believe in this country. I believe that this country is exceptional. I believe it's worth fighting for and I believed it was worth dying for. And for me, that oath that I took has no expiration date. My message to parents would be this, our country was built by respecting the family. Families built this country. Families are the backbone of this country and families are what is going to save this country. Don't forget that and do not ever cede your authority as parents. Here in Texas, it's codified into the family law code. It's codified into the Texas education code. It's codified into the government code. The rights of parents is codified in the state, uh, in, in multiple places in the law in the state of Texas. Understand the law. Embrace your rights. Do not be afraid to assert your rights as parents. I ask parents all the time, do you know anybody that knows better what is in the best interest of your child than you? Cambry, nobody has ever told me that they believe somebody else is better positioned or knows better with this best for their child than they do. Parents have more power than they realize. They need to lean into that power. They need to assert that power. They need to do it legislators. They need to do it when they vote for school board members and they need to do it when they hold their school board members accountable.
Now, when parents are going for, um, Freedom of Information Act to try to find information, you know, I'm just curious, what's the procedure of that? Because I know that there has been school districts that have absolutely just refused to allow the parents to, uh, to hand over information to the parents at all. They don't know the next steps, um, because it's almost kind of like a, I said, it's, it's a very fearful, um, parents are scared. Parents are fearful. They don't know who to go to. They go to the superintendent. What powers do you have as a school board? I know you guys can raise property taxes. When I found, I was like, wait, they can legis- is that considered legislation? Cause I've never heard that before where a school board, that's why I say you're very, very powerful. What powers do you have to, as, as a sitting member? And what do the parents do if they want to find out information? What's the best avenue? Because from what I am seeing, sitting in front of a school board for two minutes saying, hey, I'm coming on behalf of my child or I'm advocating, it's not really getting anywhere because I see the school board members not paying attention. They're looking at, they're waiting for the time to run out so they can leave, so they can pass whatever they need to pass.
So in the state of Texas, uh, all citizens are entitled to exercise the Public Information Act. And so that's where you can go to your governmental body, whether it's your local school district or city council, your county government, whatever. And you have a right, the law says that inherently Texans have a right to this information. Uh, what ends up happening sometimes is that governmental bodies, including school districts in Texas, don't want to turn over this information. But when that happens, the law specifically states that the person asking for the information can ask the Attorney General of Texas to overrule that governmental body. So I would say to parents, you need to familiarize yourself with the Public Information Act and exercise your rights. That, what we've, what we've learned, and this is again, something that I hear from parents around the state and from school, uh, school board members around the state, a lot of people don't even understand their rights. And if you think that your local elected leaders are going to educate you on your rights, you're going to be disappointed. As citizens, it's incumbent upon all Texans to understand and exercise their rights.
That's interesting because I'm sitting here thinking, I have no idea what my rights are. I don't. I have a daughter that's in high school. I have no idea at all.
You have more rights than you think, Cambry.
I know. And where would parents go to find out, would find out? I mean, I wish, um, our schools would actually at the beginning of the year, they, they give all the handouts of this is how you pay this, online school fees. This is how you pay for the kid's meals. This is this, if you need to apply for this. I mean, literally, we get like a whole stack of papers, but there's not the parents' rights. I never have seen that before. Where would they go to find out that information? Because I'm curious myself to go look it up.
Uh, you're going to have to, uh, spend some time online. It's all publicly available information. And I would say, you know, what, one great thing, before I got elected, I spent two years going to every school board meeting in my community, every Round Rock ISD school board meeting. And not only did I learn a lot about the school district, about the people who run it, about this, uh, elected members, but I met other people. And that's the beauty of when you go to your local governmental body meetings throughout the state, you're going to meet other people who are there to learn as well. And you start connecting with these people, then you can start leveraging manpower, energy, time, and that is one of the most beautiful things. I saw it at the Capitol. Like I said, last week, I was there for two days, meeting people from around the state. And over and over, I would hear the same stories from people. I met this person at a school board meeting and we helped each other. So that's, that's another reason to go to school board meetings is to help each other and learn.
We are entering election season, which I see has, it hasn't stopped. All over the state of Texas, we have people and candidates that are running as a school board member. They've had enough. Um, we also have people that are up for reelection. What is your advice for people, one, um, that is considering to run? Um, two, what's your advice for the candidates who are currently running, um, for school board members, wherever they are over the state of Texas?
So I'll tell you this, Cambry, in the state of Texas, we have 5.4 million students in K through 12 public education. These are children who all have families that love them and parents that care about them. And every single one of them deserves a bright future and every single one of them deserves elected and unelected leaders in their local school district who is laser focused on meeting their educational needs as they prepare to enter the most competitive workforce in human history. So for people who are considering running, I would say, make sure that you are running for the right reasons. And I will tell you this, Cambry, make sure that you understand that if you are running for the right reasons, that the reward for this is going to be harassment-
Right.
-intimidation, threats, um, and any number of things. And you really need to ask yourself, are you prepared for that? And it, you're going to have to ask people in your community to, you know, if this is what they want, do they really want a school board member who is only there for children? Who's not there to line their own pockets? Who's not there to build their own resume or some sort of career enhancement? Or is not there because they want to be invited to the local cocktail parties? You, you really need to ask yourself, am I running for, uh, to do right by these children who need us? And if you are, you need to find people in your community who believe in you. It costs money. You got to support these candidates. in you. It costs money. You got to support these candidates. You got to contribute money to them. You got to tell your friends about them. And it takes a lot of work to reach all of these voters.
I've noticed that, that you, right by mind, again, that I'm noticing that the school board, people that are running for the school board, even just in my city alone, I stay down here, it almost, I wondered if they're running for a senate position or a state representative position. Because now, the school board is starting to look like you're having to spend a lot of money. There were signs everywhere. And I don't know if, if this helps someone that's running for office. Up, up north, I noticed that they were putting no CRT in schools. They were having to put taglines on their, on their posters, even on the side of the streets, because they had to define themselves from the other school board members. It's almost, it's now, it's political. You had to identify who was the conservative and who was not the conservative. Is that important? Is that important? Does it play a role at all?
So I'll tell you this, you know, earlier, you asked me what surprised me the most. And I said, I gave you an example, but there are actually a lot of things that surprised me in the two year, almost two years that I've been on the board. One of them is when I ran in 2020 for this seat, I think there was a part of me, I actually believed this could be a nonpartisan endeavor. I actually believed that. I believe that people from different parties could get elected to the same school board, anywhere in the state, and then find what the common ground was and build on that. I actually believed that. But what I have come to learn, Cambry, is I've been so disappointed that that is not what I have seen. What I have seen was this hard, radical push. And when I just would question it, when I, when I would say things like, well, can we at least not have to, not to have our children have to wear masks outside? When I would say, could we maybe hire a superintendent whose work experience is more consistent with the size, scale, and scope of ours? Could we maybe hire somebody with more relevant experience? Or when I would say, I don't think we need to reinstate somebody into the superintendency when an investigator has told us not to. These all became political issues. And it's been very disappointing. But we have to understand the battlefield as it exists, not as we want it to be. In order to be successful for our children, our schools need to be focused on students. They need to be pro-parent. They need to understand and respect the rule of law. And they need to practice the open government as it's directed in the law in our state.
I thank you for being here today. A wealth of knowledge. You answered a lot of my questions and hopefully, a lot of people that are watching, you've answered theirs. I don't think you've realized, the example that Round Rock ISD, what you guys have been through, has been for us as parents. You have opened the eyes for parents. And let me tell you, as a mother who speaks with other mothers who are highly involved in our school's education, you have, your district has created something, a force. And these people that are coming in that want to do harm to our communities and our children, they need to watch out. Because I tell you, we are ready to vote in November. And they have created a lot of pit bull moms. And we're ready to start barking. So I appreciate you being here so much.
Thank you so much, Cambry.
Well, you have heard everything that's going on. Not really everything, but you've heard, I would say, from a horse's mouth, of what's happening inside Round Rock ISD. I was not prepared to sit down and have this conversation a few weeks ago. I'll be honest with you. After I sat down with Michelle Evans, that opened a complete can of worms. And that can of worms has led me to school board members. That can of worms have led me to speaking with superintendents. You guys have to realize that this is a very hot subject. Parents are concerned. People are concerned. Children are starting to speak out of what's going on in their backyard. So you have to be the very proactive parent to dig into everything that's going on in your community, even school board members. It's like I said, I truly believe this is one of the most important votes that you are gonna cast as a parent, as a grandmother, as a guardian of your children, of whatever children you have in your home. It is your responsibility. We want what's best for our kids in Texas. And I'll tell you, we are gonna fight tooth and nail for our children. And we have incredible school board members across the state of Texas that are willing to fight alongside with us. So with that being said, I will see you down the road.
So our marketing team tells us that everybody loves videos of cats.
Not everyone.
Well, maybe not everyone. But if you love cat videos, if you love liberty, and if you love getting your most trusted political news from anywhere in the state, we're inviting you to subscribe to Texas Scorecard. Now, you might not actually see any videos of cats in our content, but you will see videos that help you stay informed and up to date on the most recent shenanigans from the litter box, I mean, Capitol down in Austin. So subscribe to our YouTube channel today, click the bell, and become an informed citizen.